So at this time, I will invite a comment from the Budget Ad Hoc Committee if you wish. It's up to you. But we, council does, did choose to use a Budget Ad Hoc Committee again. And this is the maybe fifth year. And the committee members were selected by the mayor and our council members, the mayor, Harris and Pasquali. Did you want to make any comments either of you gentlemen?
Not a whole lot. At this point, it's pretty early in the game. Other than was, I appreciate the process. I think it's good to have, like you were saying, a perspective on the budget process from a policymaker's perspective. The, due to previous budgets, we've been, we've rung the rags so, so dry that it was, we didn't leave us with a whole lot of options. And so we had, we had to come down to some choices we had to make. And I think we did a good job of doing that. But I do appreciate staff and the, and the department heads coming when they came into the meetings. Were realistic. And the typical, you'll, the old school tactic would be ask for the moon and hope for something lower, you know, some, but they were realistic and we had some good frank conversations. We had to make some tough decisions because everything was definitely articulated well in the need, but we only have so much to go around. So I do appreciate staff and everybody who came in and spoke with us. And it was, it was, I think, a very effective process. So, sure.
Yeah, the process was, was spot on, bringing everyone to the table to be in front of the mayor and myself and giving their spiel, what they thought they needed. There was a lot of wants, but they knew that there was going to be what was needed. And I appreciate that. Everybody did really, really fine. They were well-prepared, which I appreciated and very good process. I'd been in a process line by line before with the colleges, so I was familiar with it and I liked the process. So it worked real well.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Now, the committee met with each department to hear budget needs and deliberated, deliberated over a long final day. And the recommendations are following. And, and I would, I would like to add too, just agree that, you know, the departments presented, presented the ad hoc committee with a pretty thin budget. It wasn't, not a lot, a lot of asks. The, the items that were in there that, that were more wants than needs, the departments trimmed those out themselves. And so kudos to the whole team for getting together on this. You can see that the general fund recommendations are for material supplies and services are about 1.3, 1.03 million. And the ad hoc rejected about 334,000 recommendation, the, the department recommendation was, and ad hoc recommendation is about 173,000 in personnel requests. I'll show you at the end, there's, there's not very many new positions in that. There, there are some new positions, but it's really filling a, a strong need. Most of that is just trying to move, move people in positions around into the right, the right spaces, the best help, the best help the department. And then the personnel requests rejected were 418,000. The ad hoc committee said yes to about $37,000 in new capital assets, capital acquisitions, and no to 12,000 in capital acquisitions. That was the general fund. The water fund, the recommendations were 1.6 million into material supplies and service, 78,000 in personnel requests and 70,000 in capital acquisitions. And the wastewater fund, a million dollars in material supplies and services. Recommendation was to reject about 19,000 and recommend 69,000 in personnel requests. And I'm going to get into the details later, or we're going to show you later. But, you know, a whole bunch of those were items that you don't have a ton of control over, like gas and electric increases. There, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's more difficult to control. Technology Fund. Can you hear us okay? All right. Technology Fund, speaking of, 249,000 in capital acquisitions. And then vehicle replacement fund, 527,000 in capital acquisitions. And again, we'll go over those, those details a little bit later. As mentioning in an earlier, as mentioned in an earlier slide, transfers of one-time reserves are balancing this, this budget. Reserves will come from budget stabilization. And, and again, this is a, this is a discussion point a little bit later in the presentation, but we're anticipating budget stabilization reserve will close the gap of about 5.5 million. So you do see, starting with the 2324 adopted budget, the, with the revenues, the decreases are going to probably be right around 3.8 million. But remember that we did move 6.6 million into revenues and out of the ARPA funding. So ARPA had its own fund. And so we, we decided that council's direction was to turn those ARPA dollars into budget stabilization reserves. And so that's why the revenue was so much higher last year. So it'll be about 3.8 million less this year. And then we've got, we'll be using reserves to close the gap in total revenues of just under 60, 62 million. And then expenditures, we started out with 2324, we had 57.4 million. We're proposing, proposing increases or increases are just, are just happening, a four point, almost four, 4.4 million to give us a balanced budget of 60, just under 62 million. So the city does have reserves and does have discretionary funds. So budget stabilization reserve is, is just, is just one of them here at the, here at the bottom. So I just mentioned that. But you also have a healthy cities reserve, which is by policy, council usually directs the, directs me, the finance director, to take any surpluses and first make that, that healthy cities reserve 15% of the next fiscal year's proposed budget, expenditure budget. And then you have some other discretionary funds. Vehicle replacement is projected to, at the end of fiscal year 2324, to be just over 9 million. Pension stabilization fund, which is our monies that this council set aside to offset, to be assets that offset the liability of unfunded pension. We have some development impact fee loans that are out there where they, the general fund loaned money to the impact fee fund to further fund that some of the underfunded categories. We have general fund CIP, which is around, going to be around 1.4 in unallocated funds this year. And then, like I said, the general, the budget stabilization reserve. So the healthy cities reserve is kept recalculated at the adoption of each budget for the following year, 15% is a minimum. And if we were able to ever to use these reserves, which we'll be discussing later in this, this presentation, council should expect to plan to build them back to their proper levels. Across the state of California, 15% is considered to be a very minimal number. But as you, as you can see, this, these are not our only reserves. So we have, we have other reserves as well. If we are not going to add to the healthy city reserves in 2425, then the, the reserves at this current level that they are now that you see on the slide will fall to about 13% of our, our general fund budget that we're proposing. And you could, you could direct me to transfer monies from the general fund CIP to make that 1.3 million that we need to get up to the 15%. You could direct me to do that and that'll be a decision point later. And then, of course, council retains discretion to redirect and spend general funds no matter where they are and what they've been designated to do or what they've been proposed to do. So that's why I listed these other balances. So while you have discretion over all these other funds, the funds have a purpose and the opportunity cost must be considered. So if you've got funds right now, you have about 9 million set aside to replace vehicles as they become inoperable or just age out. If you were to utilize some of those reserves to help close a future budget gap, then that's just fewer vehicles you're going to be able to replace. So that's the opportunity cost. So that's something that you have always considered and that you would have to consider in the future. I do want to further acknowledge your city's department heads for submitting reasonable and responsible budget projections and proposals that fell in line with the city's current financial positions. Like I said, when they handed the ad hoc committee and the ad hoc committee passed this, this proposed budget on to the council at large, there's, they were pretty, pretty lean and that, the asks were very, very reasonable. So the, the team did a really, really nice job this year. So with that, let's get into, take a look at the general fund. So in this slide, you can see that the projected 2324 general fund is 62.4 million. And that does include that 6.6 million of ARPA funding that we, we moved into the, into the general fund. So it kind of inflates that a little bit. And then on the slide, the far right bar is the 61.8 million that we discussed earlier. This does show the general fund revenues over time, the last 10 years of actual historical results and the 2324 projected and the 2425 proposed budgets. These figures include transfers from other funds. And then about 23 million of the 24 projected revenues are public safety generated, just for your information, in 2324. And in 2425, that number increases to about 2.5 million. So the largest revenue changes for 2425, as they differ from the 2324, sales tax is expected to increase just a very small amount over what we budgeted in, in 2324. It's been pretty flat for a while. It grew tremendously during, during COVID. We went from just probably under 16 million to over 18 million or right around 18 million. And so it's just, from that point, it's just leveled off. From about 2021, it's leveled off and might see some, some slight declines, depending how the next two quarters come in. Property tax remains strong. And to further that, that good news, you know, the, the sales, the sales prices are up, so that, that helps for every house that does sell. And then we also are building a lot of house, new rooftops right now. So that's going to help in the near future. Franchise fees are expected to increase slightly. And we did, again, have that one time, general fund transfer six, transfer to the general fund of 6.6 million. And then all other miscellaneous items combined resulted in an increase of revenues, about 356,000. So sales tax, been pretty, pretty, like I said, pretty slow couple of years, especially when we were seeing double-digit increases during the COVID time, 2020, 2021. So we're, we're just kind of teetering along. It's, it's very, it's at an ice level. It's good. It can, it can pay for a lot of general fund, good services and salaries, but it's, we're outpacing it. The general fund expenses are increasing much, much higher. And so we would like that to not be so flat. These are the most recent four quarters and they've already been analyzed for anything that was put in the wrong account. These are vetted numbers. And they're, when we look at the future, there is some, some optimism, but we're talking pretty small increases statewide over the, over the future. And right now, we're, what I'm expecting to see is, is the, the first two quarters for the calendar year come in, so which is those are the quarters we're in, last quarter and the quarter we're in now. I think fuel price increases are going to buoy these numbers a little bit, so increase our sales tax a little bit. So that's given me some optimism. And I'm going to pass the microphone over to Deanna's right.
Thank you. So the next few slides is going to address the general fund expenditures. This slide is actual results for 10 years, along with the 24 projected and the 25 proposed. It's broken down for each year into categories of salaries and benefits and MSNS. Of the proposed general fund budget, 62% is for police and fire services. Add in the public works and it becomes 74% of the general fund. The largest expenditure changes, this is a list of the largest general fund expenditure changes from the fiscal year 2324 budget to the fiscal year 2425 budget. There's roughly 2.6 million in salaries and benefit increases, reflects the cost from new labor agreements and increasing cost of staff, existing positions and additional positions requested to meet the demands of the city's priorities going into the next fiscal year. Fiscal year 2425 changes in payroll includes 173,000 in personnel requests, including record OT of 5,000, safer grant shortfall of 52,000. Reducing fire OT of 130,000. Public works, development services, operational changes of 223,000. City manager reducing, changing a management analyst to a 1-2, reducing it by 30,000. Finance director succession transition one time of 53,000. What was rejected was an additional CSO of 103,000. Staff is recommending ongoing MSNS increases of 1.2 million. This includes for safety, various equipment, K-9 costs, utility costs, building maintenance, physicals and PPE of about 348,000. Non-safety includes gas and electric, equipment, maintenance and parts, uniform software supplies and elections. Rejected were operational costs that can be absorbed in the existing budget and a priority dispatch software. Liability and property insurance both have continued to increase each year due mostly to national weather, fire and political events. The vehicle replacement fund balance will cover the most immediate needs, so no general fund contribution this coming fiscal year. That's why we're seeing a reduction of 450,000. Animal services increases is based on the city's share of the recently approved budget. There will be a revenue offset from Sutter County and Live Oak around 22%. PG&E rates continue to climb and staff continue to explore alternatives. And I'm passing it back.
So as we look at pension story, the story has been unchanged for, for many years, since about 2013. So we'll see, I was, I'm going to show you some graphs that are a little bit different, are a little bit different than last year, but they, they move around so much. That's going to be part of the, part of what I show you. This slide represents costs for PERS retirements. That's percent, percentage of every dollar of payroll. Safety is in red and miscellaneous is in blue. This is a blended composite rate of all the tiers, including unfunded actuarial liability payments and is based on CalPERS payroll cost estimates. So every year, CalPERS sends up actuarial reports for all the different tiers of pension. And they estimate in those, I think they're at 3% increase per year, which sometimes is too high for us, sometimes too low. But that's, that's their estimate. Most of the time it's too high. These projected rates are based on the actuarial reports. This, this most recent year was based on the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. So those are the, the reports that we received just this last, last summer. And the assumption changes CalPERS has made in the past few years, which are increasing our UAL contributions at alarming rates sometimes. Are, as we're at a peak of the impacts of the changes for miscellaneous plans, but we must anticipate next ones. So we prepay the UAL, the unfunded actuarial liabilities, so we can receive an interest rate discount from CalPERS rather than paying 1/12th each month. So we just make one lump sum payment for all of our unfunded actuarial liability payments for the whole year and saves us 6.8% interest on that, on those 20. If they, so they charge you interest if you pay it monthly. Finance converts that UAL, UAL payment, or at least we have in the past, to a percentage of payroll for analytical purposes, since we know what our total estimated payroll dollars are for each of the PERS contact tiers. And that's how we develop the composite rate for comparison purposes. So the PERS projections change for cost, change each time CalPERS updates any assumptions that they use for their actuarial analysis, whether or not they hit their projected investment income target or exceed it, and when they provide CalPERS employers with new actuarial reports. So finance's projections are only really as good as the information we have available from CalPERS at any specific time, point in time. So I really, I included this just so you can see how divergent the, the cost graph is from year to year. So here are four, last four fiscal years. And, and this is, this, these numbers impact how we put cost in the budget. So last year, they were coming on the heels, CalPERS investments were coming on the heels of very, very good investment returns. And so, so that reduced our cost in, in the actuarial reports. And so we use those costs to, to show you the, the cost of our, of salaries and benefits. But then, one year later, 2022, the investment did terrible. And so they were minus like 13%. And so instead of being, I think in the 20, 2021, the numbers we were using, they were plus 21% in their investment earnings. And now, now, and then 2022, they're minus, like minus 13, I think. And then this coming year, I think they're minus, they might be a plus, like a plus four, but still below the 6.8 that we're trying to hit. And so, and so this just shows how much it can change. We, we use it for budgeting, but I don't know that we can put a lot of stock into it as a trend and say, this is where we're, this is where we're heading. It's, it's where we are. That's what it looks like today. So, so I expect that it'll be in between these two in the next coming years. Hopefully we'll get some more of those 2021 type save, savings. But that's, that remains to be seen.
Okay. So the next few slides, we're going to address the enterprise fund budgets. This slide shows flat revenues as usage remains about the same as last year, while the expenses continue to increase. The proposed operating revenue is forecasted decrease by 1.2% compared to expenditure increases of 5.5%. Increasing expenses are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain at or slightly above the 1.2 required in the bond debt covenant. The available water fund cash reserves is declining as operating expenditures outpace revenue, outpace revenues. Declining net revenue has put more pressure on debt coverage. You will see details of the CIP for water in the next presentation. Wastewater, the fiscal year 2425 wastewater fund revenue budget is showing slightly decreasing revenues, increasing expenses and a declining debt service ratio. Forecasting relatively flat revenues will not keep us with expenses that continue to increase steadily. Like water, increasing expenses are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we're, though we are projecting the ratio to remain above the 1.2, 2 required in the bond debt at 1.45. This is a similar, similar slide as what you saw for water, but shows a large spike in CIP for the wastewater plant improvements and increase in cash due to bonds proceeds. And the next slide, the next ones will, Amargie will speak.
So we were presented by the departments with the several requests with regards to the capital acquisition. Here are the general fund. We approve, oh, sorry, we were proposed the K-9 for PD for 25,000 due to the retirement and a utility trailer for the park maintenance. This is for the vehicle replacement fund. And we received for general fund, 388,000. And out of that, the replacement cost for general fund for the existing is 151,000 and new for general fund is 237,000. And then among that vehicle replacement, we have 70,000 replacement for the water, which is the enterprise fund.
Let's, let's real quick, just address the, the scored out language right there. That is the vehicle for the CSO that was rejected. So we inadvertently left it in and it doesn't belong, that doesn't belong there. So someday when we do hire a CSO, just know it'll come with a 70,000 dollar-ish vehicle. Thank you.
Next, we have the summary of the equipment that is requested by the IT, our technology department. These items are purchased directly from the technology replacement fund, which relies on the transfer from all divisions. These are the utility capital acquisition items requested both, requested through the enterprise fund. These both requests are from our lavatory. And one is the replacement for the water purification system and a replacement for a incubator. All right. Next, we have our personnel requests from the departments. We have a project coordinator, which will provide the relief to the increased project capacity for the engineering team. And we have an electrical technician too, which will be a journey level position, providing succession planning to the small team. It is funded 50% through the general fund and 50% through the enterprise fund. We have one mechanical, mechanic one two, which will be a journey level position, providing succession planning to the small team as well.
So I want to present you with some recommendations. And then the very next slide after that, I promise invites your questions and comments. So some of the things that we've done in the past and that I would, I would like to keep recommending to the, the council is to continue to make additional discretionary payments to help pay down unfunded actuarial liability. Like last year, I'm recommending doing this straight out of the pension stabilization fund, which is a fund separate. It's general fund dollars, but it's held separately than, than the general fund. It's in its own, its own savings account. And the other side of that, so since those are general fund dollars, then we usually take the equivalent amount from the utility funds and the fleet and, and Sasa. And that would be 375,000. The trouble with that is taking money from those funds is, as you could see, the debt coverage ratio on water is really tight. And so I would caveat that to say, as long as it was not going to drive us down below that 1.2 debt coverage ratio, then we can make that, that recommendation. And I can write that into the, into the budget resolution to be, to be, use some language that's going to keep, keep that, that fund safe. Or we can, we can forego. That's going to, that's a decision point for you. The other is something that I think is a little bit easier when I say that we prepay our UAL to save on interest. We've been taking that, that interest that we would have paid and making additional discretionary payment to CalPERS for unfunded liability. And so we've been doing that for, for many, many years now. And I would recommend keep doing that. But of course, the other side of that is that you could utilize those funds in the general fund some other way. So, so that's, that's something as well, a general fund and the, and the water and wastewater funds. And then I'm also recommending that, that you do close the, the, the operating deficit of the general fund with the, the balance of the budget stabilization reserves, 5.5 million. There's a chance that we will have that we, we won't spend all the, all the money we have in that, that we, we budgeted, which is what we expect this year. And so whatever of those funds that you, that the city does not end up utilizing to, for, for budget, we'll just roll and, you know, be able to use that in, in subsequent fiscal years. we'll just roll and, you know, be able to use that in, in subsequent fiscal years. And then, as I mentioned, the funding of the, the healthy cities reserve. So to, because we're, as we're technically in a, in a deficit position, we're not going to be, we're not going to have a surplus to fund the healthy cities reserve with, to bring it back up to 15%. So if we don't do anything, it'll be at 13% this, this fiscal year. And you can address it, come up with a plan to address it later. Or we can move general fund CIP dollars out of unallocated general fund CIP into the, into the general operating budget and cover the, the reserve, bring the reserve back up to 15%. And then that just means that if you were to come up with a, an urgent project in your general fund capital improvement projects area, then you would have to look to some of the other discretionary funds to make that, to make a big project happen. So it doesn't, we don't see that very often, but at some point you might, you might want to make, make a big change or make a big improvement to one of the facilities, general funds facilities, or you might, you might want to use that discretionary cash. So to me, you know, cash is fungible. Means if I, it's all general fund. So if I, if I, if I move it from, from one of these other places, all that, all it's doing is changing the purpose of those dollars. Right now, all the discretionary funds that I listed that are not the healthy cities reserve are, they're, they're just, they're, have been given a purpose. And so by moving this, moving CIP dollars, I think those are the easiest dollars to move out. If you want to get that, that healthy cities reserve back up to 15%, then I think those are the easiest dollars to, to move. And with that, we'd love to hear any feedback that you have for us at this time. So we can write a resolution that you do tomorrow.
No pressure. Real quick, do we have any comments from the public? Nothing. All right. Open for discussion, gentlemen.
I had one mayor, chief with the dog, the canine. Did we, because the mayor and I were in discussions at the ad hoc about, I thought there was two canine that you were requesting, or you just were only going to do the one? So it is just the one? Because I, I know Sean and I had a discussion, didn't we have a discussion about that? You said, can we go for the two?
We specifically talked about it. I thought it was two as well.
Okay. Oh. Is that?
Okay. I think we're. If he's good, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, yeah. Next question I had was, oh, come on, get back up here. Spencer, the 15% that we're shooting for, that equates to our ability to go out and get money, get loans, correct? I mean, is that in, in, in the equation of when they're looking at us?
Yes, I think, I think that, that number gets pulled out because it's really the only designated reserve that we, that we show on our books. But we do have this other discretionary funding and I, and we would be able to make a, a strong case or show a bond rating agency, which would be the, the ones that would be really looking at this closely, that, that we have, we have the ability to do what we're asking to do. Of course, we wouldn't ask to, ask to finance anything that we really couldn't afford. We couldn't afford debt service payment on. So it would just be decisions on, on, on how to do that. Being at 15% is already pretty low across the state. But we, we've always known that we, we've, the way we save for vehicles, for instance, is different than a lot of agencies save for vehicles. So a lot of agencies don't have that, that vehicle replacement fund. And that's something that's been built here over, over many years, just saving the money. Regardless of how effective the, the plan necessarily feels like it is, it's, the money's, you know, there is money there. We have a budget stabilization reserve that not all agencies have adopted. And so you can use that in a couple of different ways, but only for pensions. But, but you have the ability to use that to offset, take some pressure off the general fund. So you have, you have these other, these other sources that, that you, you could utilize to, to satisfy a, a, a bond rating agency. But you know, we do have a policy that says you're going to do your best to make it 15%. But if not, you just, we, we need, we need to kind of all agree on a plan to get it back to 15%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank you and your staff for doing a great job on this, by the way, thank you very much. And I participated last year and I want to thank the ad hoc for, for going out of the way to take so much time and get into weeds on this, so thank you. The one question I had, you covered in the last slide, which was that pension stabilization fund. And thank you for covering that. What this tells me though is you mentioned the sales, sales are flat, sales tax. But property tax is, is looking pretty healthy. And so what that tells me is, is a, a, a healthy housing market is, is a good thing. It's a good, it's a very positive thing because that's how we, how we pay our bills. But other than that, well done. Thank you.
Spencer, as always, thank you for everything you've done, you and your team and our department heads. Going back to your slide on the sales tax projections and where we're at. You know, that's, that's more of a concern at this point because, you know, we were, we've kind of projected them going up over the last several years. And I've been going, they're, they're going to stay stable at best, go down. We're seeing that, we're looking at the economy right now. The only thing that's keeping sales tax propped up is the fact that inflation is just out of control. That's the only thing, you even alluded to it, the fact that gas is higher, that's propping it up right now. Cars are higher, it's, it's, that's what's propping it up. People are not spending what they have, they don't have the disposable income. What is our analyst projecting for? As you were projecting, I believe it was 1.4 increase in the budget for sales tax?
No, about 150,000, but I'm projecting.
Okay, there was a percent on another slide that I was referring to. So there you go, budget increase 23, 23, 24 was 1.4. The next one's only 0.5, there we go. Okay, so that was my first question of concern. What, what is our analyst saying in that we're building in 0.5? But what are they projecting? And you know my opinion of their projections.
Yeah, so HDL is our, is our consulting firm that we, we work with on this. They are consistently low for us. They're consistently low. And so I'm always just a, just a hair higher than them. I think they've got us, I've got us relatively flat and they've got us, I think, just, just under maybe 17, eight or so, 17, 850, right around there. So they're, they're just a little bit lower than I.
So they're actually kind of consistent with us this time. Years ago, they were saying that it was going to rise and go crazy and we're like, we're not seeing it. So the other question, go forward to the next, I think it was the next slide, where you had the, the, the one with the revenues year over year. There you go. If we really look at what we've infused, we're watching a trend that our revenues have really flattened out. Because if we take off the 6 million and the 5 million, we plateaued about, you know, 55, 56 million and it's stagnant right there. So, and then we've got a lot of increased cost coming in. Okay, so I, I wanted to point those out because I'm getting to things that we're talking about with the stabilization fund, the CIP money, the healthy cities. The 15%, is that based upon the 62 or 61 million, which is inflated because we injected 6 million? Or is it off our true revenue?
It's actually off our expenditures.
Okay, so it's off the expenditures.
Which is about, it's the same number, but off the expenditures.
Yeah, we didn't miss it by much. Okay. Then with that, going to how we do the UAL payment. And I believe you had the amount you were trying to pull from the enterprise funds, but concerned about the liquidity that they're in our ratios. Can we not fully pay that discretionary payment just out of that and basically give our enterprise funds? And, you know, they can give us an IOU for later. I'm concerned about those ratios because we're getting mighty close to 1.2.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a little, so the, all the money in the pension stabilization reserve is, fund is general fund. So yeah, we would have to do, 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 from kind of a loan to, to do that. That's certainly something on the table, it's option.
Okay, I think it's something we probably need to just make sure it doesn't affect, affect that ratio of the 1.2 going into. And that's something I could get behind as well as bringing us up to the full 15%. Because looking forward, part of the things that we've had discussions on is we need to fix our roads. And we're going to be looking at, you know, bond money at some point to possibly do that. And we need to have our, our ducks in a row, our house in order. And we need to look at the issuers of those and the, the agents to where they're looking at is giving us a good bond rating. And I think if we let it drop below that 15 as designated, you know, we kind of go in with our arm tied behind our back. So we definitely need to, to move some things around to keep that up.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. And, and you know, obviously the other option is to not make an ADP this year, not make an additional discretionary payment this year. That's, that's an option, if that's, if that's the direction you wanted to go. We still keep the assets in the pension stabilization fund, which offsets the liability. And so we're in a, we're in a similar position. The, the difference though, by making the ADP is you're, you're paying down a little principal on your house. So there's, there is a, there's a, a distant future amount of savings there. But if you, you decided that this was a difficult fiscal year and it's best to just to be status quo, like just no, no ADP, that's an option.
Yeah, with the way the state is managing the money and their subpar returns, it would behoove us to make that because it's the time value of money for future. So I, like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of that. We just, you see the areas of concern that we got to maneuver around. That's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First to the department heads and their staff, thanks for the hard work on putting forth what I would consider to be a realistic budget. I know it's not easy to sit back and know what you would like to have and how that might enhance services, but dealing with the reality of the current budget scenario and the revenues and the expenditures. Second, to your staff, to the three of you and those who support you, you know, having spent, you know, a few years on the ad hoc committee and all of us have had a turn in the bucket now. You know, but being patient with us as we, you know, pour through line by line through that and, you know, ask the, the good questions. I think that combined with your professionalism, along with the city manager and the department heads, place us in a spot which is probably better than some. At least as I look up and down the state, there are quite a few municipalities that are really, really struggling. It's not that we're not struggling, but we're probably not struggling as much. The constraints of the Brown Act obviously keep us from, the five of us from chit chatting about certain things. And so as I look at your presentation, and thank you today for answering my questions as well, I, you know, a few things stand out to me. And ever since I've been on the council, which I began in 2019, it's all about essential services. You know, what are those things that government was established to take care of? Public safety, roads, water and sewer. So when I look at the budget, and this is not to, to throw any shade on this ad hoc committee or any of the previous ones, it's always the measure I, I bounce it up against, which is what are we in this budget? What are we potentially funding that is not necessarily conducive to, to those essential services? Especially in, in tough budget times. And I think that's even heightened when we are contemplating going out to the constituency for revenue measures. So for me, it was kind of a deeper dive into some of those things that I think that we are taking a look at and continue to spend. So a couple of things came to mind. Number one, were those agencies or those things that we take, you know, we, we participate in. And two of those are the League of California Cities and Secog. And so this is for my, my colleagues up here as well. On the League of California Cities, I'm wondering, again, our investment in that particular organization. I, I really wonder, you know, are we getting on ROI? And so having the benefit of 16 to 15 years of local government budget responsibility and another 13 years of a, of private sector, I always look at ROI. And, you know, I think that's one of the things that all of us take a look at, is are we getting a return on our investment? I don't have any specifics on League of California Cities. I do have specifics on Secog. Okay, we have a nice brand new bridge, we have a bridge street improvement. So our cooperation with that organization seems to be returning, returning, you know, on our money. Unfortunately, and this came about in the last meeting, when I spoke with, about GSEC, I do not see a return on investment. By their own admission, over the last eight years, we have provided them with $217,000 worth of, of City of Yuba City tax revenue. And to date, and I could not get an answer from Mr. Broome on the, on the dais last week about what that has done for us. I heard a lot about Bosch going into Germany or coming from Germany, I heard about the, the airport. But I never really heard anything about what they were doing for the City of Yuba City. So I look at the 27,000 that they are asking this year and I think to myself, wow, okay. So we have a safer, a safer number of 52K that we're trying to capture. That's public safety, it's fire department. You have a $25,000 police canine. That's public safety that we are now having to fund additionally. We're talking about our own economic development person and increasing our expenditures there. And I can point to, to that effort and say, yeah, that's got some return on investment. We are seeing some things happening. So when it comes to these subscriptions or, or participations, some, some makes sense, i.e. Secog. And some to me, I really question. And I think that it's fair for us to ask ourselves, you know, on a go forward basis, do we really expect that? I think what I've heard is, well, let's give them another chance. We gave them eight chances so far. How many more chances do you want to give them? I, I don't, I don't see it. If it was my money, I wouldn't invest it. It's your money out there in the listening audience. I don't want to invest it on your behalf. I'm probably the, I may be the Lone Ranger on this, but nonetheless, I feel very compelled to bring that up. And I'm hoping that at least it would be considered as, as, look, we've got fire and we've got police needs that are increasing our budget. Is this a more reasonable expenditures to take care of that? Doesn't mean that we always have to be away from GSEC, but it also means that, show me. To date, and we brought it up two weeks ago, we brought up, hey, the Kmart property, almost 14 acres, still not on their site as of yesterday. You know, and the answer I got was, well, you need to tell us about that. What are we paying you for? I don't get it. So as far as, as, you know, going forward with the budget, you guys have done a great job. I really don't have any other questions. I think that the, and I know it sounds de minimis, but nonetheless, as we go forward with a revenue measure, I want to stand in front of groups like I did today. And I want to be able to say, hey, look, we have trimmed the budget. There isn't any fluff here. The things that we're spending on, on behalf of you are for those essential services that you require as, as a citizen and that we want to deliver as a city council. So with that, I will close my, I will close my comments. Again, I do, this isn't any, any disregard for the ad hoc committees, nothing, nothing against you. It's just Councilman Mark Boomgarden, representing District Two, telling you how I really feel about those expenditures. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Quick question, Spencer, have we done any?
Quick question, Spencer. Have we done any, the, taken the time or had the time or even the ability to project? We have a lot of businesses coming into town or several as far as potential sales tax revenue from those businesses and also property tax from the few hundred homes that we're building?
I, I've not seen anything myself on, on that. And that's maybe an area where development services and finance team should, should get, get together and, and see. Some of those feel like they take, from, from my perspective, feel like they take forever to come to fruition. But if, if there are more near-term programs, anyone on the council wants to know, or near-term builds, builds that you want to know about, we could probably figure it out. So the, the consultant that we use, HDL, they represent cities all up and down the state. And they have a pretty good finger on the pulse of what businesses produce. Of course, you know, it's going to be maybe slightly different in Corder Madera than it is in Yuba City. But, but I think they can come up with a pretty good range and, and give us an estimate.
Hopefully it will be encouraging because as Vice Mayor pointed out, we've been flat for three years and it's, revenues are not very steep, or excuse me, revenues, expenditures are very steep curves. So it'd be nice to at least have an idea of hopefully how good it is versus how bad it's going to be. But if it's not too much trouble, I'd be interested in knowing those numbers, getting an estimate. Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Boomgarden, I'm shoulder to shoulder with those two comments. You are not the lone soldier.
You are, you guys are looking for direction, a couple of specific things, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going back to the sand slide. I just, these are the, probably the, the most pressing. Of course, if the, if you had any other things you wanted to see in the, in a resolution or in the, in the budget that we bring back to you on June eighteenth, we can, we can work on getting that in. But these are some of the decision points. Are we going to do an ADP? Do we want to take Councilmember Vice Mayor Shaw's recommendation and figure out what portion of the three hundred seventy-five thousand comes from water and look at the other funds and see if they're going to be okay? And do we, do we loan the money out of the pension stabilization reserve? Which, something we can, we can figure out and make that happen. Do we want to do an ADP at all? Do we want to do and use the UAL prepayments savings to, to make an additional discretionary payment? Do we want to close a deficit with budget stabilization funds and are we going to get that Healthy Cities Reserve up to fifteen percent by transferring funds from the unallocated general fund CIP? Are we going to let it be at thirteen percent?
I don't mind starting out by saying I'm in favor of an ADP, always will be. Keeping the ratio at one point two and keeping the, the the fifty percent for reserves. In this, we have other?
All right, through the mayor, I, I think that using the vice mayor's comments, I would hope that you know, the, the budget maneuvers that we do provide us with the opportunity, should the revenue measure pass, should, should we put it on the ballot and should it pass, that we place ourselves in a position to best take advantage of those bonding opportunities at the best favorable rates. So I guess maybe I'm, I'm listening or hearing or hoping I might hear from you is those, those things, do any of those place us in a detrimental position? When we look forward to a road bond or a fire station bond or what have you?
I think the Healthy Cities Reserve visibility is probably the only thing up there that is going to come close. It would, it would require us, if we were to present, which we're still, before any bonding would happen related to a, a proposed transaction tax, we, we're still a few years out. So you have, you have some time to get that back to fifteen percent. Just every year that it's below fifteen percent, it's a bigger and bigger lift to get it to fifteen percent. And so I can't remember the exact number outright off, but this year's figure to do so. Yeah, I don't, I didn't write it down. We did, we did, we did, we did figure it out for one point three, one was one point three to get it back. So to fifteen percent. So I think that's the only, that's the only one that might have the visibility of those, of those items. If that, that makes sense.
That fifteen percent's a criteria for obtaining?
It's, it's just something that we've, we've said that we're going to do and, and that's just a policy we have out there. And so a bond rating agency is, is going to look at our policies. They're going to want to see our, our budget policies and our debt policies and they're going to want to know, well, why aren't you at so that, then the key, key part to this is that the, a lot of the, the projects that are most likely to happen that in, that get bonded are probably going to be more general fund pointing projects. And so that's the general fund reserve. That's the primary visible general fund reserve. And so I, I think the mark's point that that's.
They might not use the ADP as a, the fact that we do an ADP as a, as an official criteria, but it sure looks good that we're, that we're conscientious of the issue for these folks, I would think.
Yeah, I, I think so. And, and the ADP is, we're sitting at about four point six million right now. If, if things were going like they were when we created the, the sorry, I said ADP, but the budget, the pension stabilization reserve. If, if things were going in the same as when we created that reserve, then that would probably be six or eight million by now. But it hasn't been. We've had a lot of obstacles and this year is one of those obstacles. And so we can, we can make the payment. We have room to make the payment. It's still, it's going to show that we have a four million dollar pension stabilization reserve, which I think is still looks pretty good. When we were building it and we got four million, we were happy with.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yes, we're all, anybody else have any info? You good with, okay.
Thumb up, thumb, thumb, thumb.
All right. I can't take a formal vote and either attorney might get mad at me, so. He's saying no. Very stoic. I don't want to be against him.
Thank you for that, for that direction. Team, get good notes. Are we, we're, we're good with what's going? Okay.
All right.
So next step, just so you and the audience know where we are, we're talking about, you made, you made reservations to staff or recommendations to staff tonight that we're going to adopt on June eighteenth and we have been doing a lot of pre-work. Amrjeet's doing a lot of pre-work and so we should be able to publish in, in July, fingers crossed. And so with that, I'm recommending a, just to take a couple of minutes break while we change over the presentation. So Director Moody can talk about CIP.
All right.
It's a pleasure.
About five, ten?
No more.
No more than five. All right, here we go. Five minute break.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
Benny Racer?
All right, whenever you guys are.
We're ready.
Okay, so, so tonight I have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the capital improvement budget. This is really the program as far as how the city handles our infrastructure needs, how we coordinate to maintain and improve our infrastructure across the city. And so real high level, and we break it through categories as far as community services, general facilities, wastewater, water, public safety, streets and roads is how we've categorized those, those type of improvements. And then we get into the funding. And so the funding. There's a lot going on here on this slide, but this is where the money comes from. And so you have general fund, your sales tax, your property tax, your various fees. You have your Transportation Development Act, which is a, a streets and roads money. You have your streets and roads gas tax, and then you're getting your development impact fees. When a house is built, they pay a portion towards your roads and your parks. You have water and wastewater that are enterprise funds. And then you get into at the bottom here, mainly grants. It's federal grants, state grants, community development, block grant funds and other miscellaneous fragment, small, small resources. And so this is the money that's coming in that we're programming into the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. And so it's not a huge amount, but it's broken out by the fund and where it's coming from. Here's a graph just to give it a visual a little bit. The green is the carryover funds. And then the purple is what this fiscal year allocation request is. And so there's a lot of numbers on here. I could definitely dive into it. Some of the takeaways, here's your general fund. Here's, here's your streets and roads money. Here's your development impact fees. And then you get into your water, wastewater, and these are your grants. So this is the money coming in. So a big chunk of the program is coming in from various grants. So project funding. And so this is where we take all the money from those different funding sources. And then we're putting them into projects. And then so just said, in general terms, we've taken that money and then we've broken it out by fund, three million into general, a big chunk of that. Two million is from a grant for four, four, two B street that I'll get into regarding environmental assessment. Your facilities, you know, you go from millions to, to thousands. Community services, thousands, public safety, thousands, and then you get into street and roads. These are these big dollar projects. They sound like a lot, eight million dollars, but it doesn't go very far as we, as we've talked. And then you get into water and wastewater. And same thing, we're programming similar to last year. But there's a lot of need out there and, and keeping that within our, our funding ability. And so this is another visual by project type. And so this is where, this is where we allocate the money. So this is where the engineering team and where people are really focusing on spending money delivering projects. And so you look on this side, you got streets, water, wastewater. That is where we are spending the, the majority of the money. And then you get into here, it's, it's a visual. You see facilities. There's needs, it's just that's what the general fund dollars are that are available to program those, the community services, public safety and your general fund. So twenty-four, twenty-five project highlights. And so, you know, this document, it's a hundred plus pages. And there's a lot of projects with a lot of different information across the board as far as stormwater, various streets. And so what I have here tonight is, is basically where the teams are focusing for the category. So really of the money, of the staff, our ability to deliver projects. I'm highlighting some of the focus projects for this fiscal year. And so regarding general projects. So these are typically your straight general fund dollar projects that, that are across the city. You have four, four, two B streets. So the city was successful in acquiring a two million dollar grant to do an environmental assessment on a piece of property behind the fountain. The, the intent is to take those dollars, move it towards cleanup to be remediated and then to to, to set up the entitlement so it's ready to develop. So it's moving it. So right now we have a piece of property that's not clean. It, it has some, it, it's, it's dirty, I guess. It has some issues with contamination. And so it's to evaluate that and then move it forward, forward. And so that's a push this year. The Fleet Master Plan, this is probably just a little bit of money. It's just seed money to be realistic. But what's going on is there's a lot of needs with fleet. And so as the world in California turns to electric vehicles, as we get bigger fire trucks, as we get street sweepers that aren't fitting into our facilities, as the city grows, there is a real need for an evaluation of where am I going to put these electric vehicles? How am I going to? And then sixty-five thousand will go to, um, go into the pot for next year's Hillcrest, Hillcrest Park, which is a bigger value. So they're playing on a hundred and sixty-five a year. They most likely won't use all of it for bog road, but that would help offset the cost for next year's, um, requirement. And then, um, a, a little bit of the factor that's pending with this is there's a potential CDBG recommendation, um, based on final council, um, recommendation where it puts about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in there for Patriot Park. There was an application received from community services for Patriot Park improvements. Well installation and upgrade. So this is an ongoing project as far as where we try to put money into that, um, each year to convert those sites. It's good for water conservation, um, and it's also good for the long term of the city that, um, the projection is that every, every well that we put online for the park, we're saving about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars annually. So ultimately it pays off in the long run. Public safety projects, so this is a, a quick shot of the new training tower, um, at fire station four in a recent remodel. And so, um, these public safety projects, there's not a lot of money in these projects, but the big ones that are on there right now. Um, when I say a lot of money, I, I, it's relative, uh, so I apologize for that. But there are, there's, there's millions of dollars going on right now with the PD evidence storage building and the fire station number two remodel that was just approved by council and given direction to move forward. Those are really the big tasks that staff are working on this year. They're going to work to deliver those projects, keep them within budget and work to coordinate around that. And then there's a little bit of money, um, fire station repair and renovation, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. There was a list. So station one bathrooms, station three kitchen update, replace generator and four bay doors, two at station one and two at station two, the front doors. And then with, um, with the fire station number four training grounds, thirty-five thousand dollars was specifically asked to continue, um, improvements for the, this comprehensive training to provide roof and forcible entry props to help with their training and to add to that, um, the training grounds. Streets and roads, so, um, you know, all thing roads right now, um, as we've sit through, sat through many present, presentations. Um, there's a huge need and, and not a lot of money. And so the focus for staff is, is Walton Avenue. Um, this is a picture Franklin Road. This was really just a reference to show new construction because this is the goal for bog road. And this is where we want to get this year. And so with, with the project under, you know, designed and under construction. And so really, um, there's a laundry list of streets, um, projects in there. There's probably twenty projects that are listed from drainage improvements to various striping projects. But really where staff is focused this year is to deliver Walton Avenue, um, move that, move that needle forward. Um, bog road improvements, um, get the design, start getting the contracts going. Um, and then you have the Sutter Bike Gap closure that, that's been on the books. We're working to, to move that forward to construction. And then you, I listed here, it's a small amount of money, but it's a big deal lately with the terror boy and ad hoc, um, traffic committee. Um, and the recent accident on highway twenty is this highway twenty at El Margarita. There's also, so it's coordination with Caltrans. We have a couple of these small ones on the books as far as some improvements at Tharp Road north of twenty. And then also we'll have to work with Caltrans about, um, highway ninety-nine at, um, bog road to engage with Caltrans and start that design process. Here at highway twenty specifically, um, I've heard from the council, um, that due to the safety concerns, due to future development needs, um, they'd like us to look at moving the needle on what are some options for highway twenty account with, um, with El Margarita. And so we, we met with Caltrans, um, right now they, they, um, their, their message is they don't feel that's a safety issue and it's developer driven if improvements need to be happened. And so there's no project in the queue, um, there's, there's no available funding at this moment, you know, but there's definitely negotiations. And so to move something forward, it's really direction by city council to, um, enter into a cooperative agreement and then start the process with Caltrans to, um, to go into a project management, um, process where they go into a feasibility study and then they start, um, evaluating different design options. And then you start working into the design process where then you have the opportunity then to start looking at, okay, what's the, what's the cost for this ultimate design? Who's going to pay for what and how we break it out? And so with that, we, we threw in fifty thousand dollars, um, during the budget process. As of last Thursday, we met with Caltrans, they gave us a quote fifty to a hundred until we actually give them the official go to get a, to get a quote for a deposit. And so what I'm recommending with this tonight is that this is listed in the CIP budget that we move this forward. Um, but what I'm looking for, um, at a later date, I'll come back to city council, um, to say, hey, here's the quote that I have from Caltrans. Um, are you willing to enter into an agreement with them to move that forward? And so, and then I'll have a real number from them and then so we're not guessing what that number's going to be. Water CIP, um, this is a, a little bit of an old picture, um, but one of the big pushes this last year was to get the second groundwater well. Um, it's just redundancy provides that, um, security for water. We had some grant funding and so right now it's under construction, the top, the wells in, um, the motor, the electrical equipment, the, 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 the storage, the building, I guess, structure is, um, is under construction with, um, plans for it to be done early this winter. Water projects, um, there's a lot of need and it's really focusing into what we have funding for and, and then prioritize it. So the water treatment plant basin improvements, this is literally the, um, the water, um, as it comes through and settles, that there's some structure, um, you know, there's time to look at that concrete to see if we need to have some coating and need to make sure there's not any cracks or grouting that we're starting to have some structural cracks in some certain spots. So that's a big deal for us. Um, so we're looking into that. The Berry School water line, that's about to take off. We're going to start seeing some action with that here very soon. Um, they're going to start, my understanding is down towards Berry and work their way north. Um, Kevin could probably give any more specifics on that. Um, so we're coordinating with how that connection works. This AR ASR system, this was the grant that we got a few years back. Um, it's really finalizing that design and, and then moving that forward. Um, Spivett Avenue water line replacement, this is a, a small grant, kind of either it came to city council the other day for, um, request for entering into the grant and moving forward with a bid. Um, we have an alum storage tank. Um, this is one of the chemicals they use to help with water treatment plot process. And then you have Richland water line. So it's a, it's a relatively small new water line connection, but, um, uh, it's a big deal down there based on, um, flows, um, quality of pipe and access. So that's what's moving forward there. And wastewater, really wastewater, it's, it's all things diffuser. Um, for me, it's, um, what's going on is we, we're, we're pushing that diffuser. We have, um, an application in for the SRF loan. We qualify for that, um, that loan, um, the in, low interest loan. Um, Kevin and his team are working to finalize those permits. We're getting closer and we have a new permit that's coming, um, from the state that we're working there. They're, they're, they're working to finalize the exact terms of it and then to release it. Um, but with that, there, there is this ongoing condition that we need to deliver this diffuser to have a stable location to, um, to, um, put the effluent into the, into the river system. And so, um, with that, that's going to be the big project to move it forward. And then really it's, it's meeting the new permit requirements, what those implement, implementations could be, um, you know, meeting all the um, new restrictions, requirements. And then, um, really then it's just kind of doing some house cleaning with available money I have as far as there needs to be some work on the clarifiers. And there's just various ongoing plant and collection needs. One of the biggest collection, um, projects that we're going to see next year, we're going to try to deliver is, um, from list station two. So behind Sutter Buttes baseball field to Market Street, um, the line is old, it's in bad shape, it needs to be lined. And so there's going to be some work there to, um, bypass the baseball field, but at the same time repair that, that line. And so that's next year's, um, mission. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any specifics.
Queens, I'm sorry.
The red, white and blue one by seven eleven.
Okay, all right, thank you, cause wow, okay, thank you. I think I should know that by now.
While, while we're on that subject, the, how much money do we have allocated for that? Or it was requested?
So for the CDBG right now, we're, um, recommending a hundred and sixty thousand. And so they could build a pretty nice park is my, what I'm hearing from the engineer for a hundred and sixty thousand for the equipment.
So CDBG, all right.
I get it right. But, but I can definitely.
Okay, I'm trying to find you, what was it, twelve, five for that second trailer? I don't know why it's weighed on me that we had to cut one of them out of there, but anyway. Go ahead, turn to find, CPG won't work, but you know.
So Ben, um, so twenty thousand dollars for the plaque at Veterans Park.
That's what's been budgeted and requested from, um, community services department.
So, uh, you know, I appreciate that ask, I'm wondering if.
Let me add to it just to make sure I get the scope right. It's bronze plaque, electrical lighting, vandalism to prevent, um, vandalism prevention for the monument flag and flagpole.
So, um, you know, I, I appreciate the ask, I'm just wondering if that's, that's good money going after bad because the council brought up, I'm sorry, staff brought up, uh, an idea that council was looking at with the idea of, of creating, uh, another, essentially another Veterans Park along the, the, the Bridge Street corridor. And it was my understanding that that had some legs to it. So my question is, I'm, I'm kind of questioning whether or not that, that's just good money going after bad. That's my two cents. Um, that's, that's good all things Walton Avenue, right? You know, I was gonna, I was gonna hit you with that. Um, you said, we're going to really get that done twenty-four, twenty-five?
I'm hesitant, it's already, it's already summertime, right?
Right.
Already summertime.
That is a no.
That is a no.
That's a hard no.
That's no.
So. But there, there's, we're working on the design, it's got to go through the Caltrans process and most likely we have to phase a little right away. Um, but Diana is correct, but we're going to try like heck to get it out to bid.
So we, 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 we're still waiting for the, the design to come through, right?
Right.
Okay. And that five point six is going to be the, the, uh, of course.
That's the target number.
That's the target number. And that's, that's with consideration, consideration with the, the, the grant that we have through Secog that's at four, four, is it Kevin, is it four million? Or five? Four point, four point four, okay, all right. So keep our fingers crossed on that one.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is where the design and the engineering team work together because we, we love everything gold plated. I love to have a signal with a roundabout with, you know, decorative streetlights and sidewalks on both sides. But we see this is the budget number, this is what we have, and we put a sidewalk on one side and we work through some sort of, uh, way to handle it to get, to deliver to that project, something that's acceptable.
Right, okay. Um, did I hear you correctly in saying that Caltrans doesn't see an issue with El Margarita and twenty?
That was what was relayed, relayed to us with the traffic staff based on, um, their input for, um, how they analyze roads as far as collision based and, and volume.
Okay.
And they see the need based on development, future development.
Right, and then you also alluded to the possibility that when and if that day comes, uh, who would, who would be responsible for that? And then we're, then we're talking about potentially property owners, right? In that area?
Yeah, I wish I had an exhibit, but it's, um, it gets, it gets into the weeds. It, it really does because it's, it's proposed to be part of our impact fee program. And so when development comes, there's a portion of that that goes into the impact fee program. But then also, um, who comes first, how do we handle that? Um, but there, there's, there's, um, there'd be different players involved.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ben.
We had similar questions, so I'll just go is, uh, it occurred to me when we're going through this too, that the twenty K, uh, given what we're doing to Veterans Park. I mean, the improvements are great, but you know, speaking from experience, you probably set your watch by how long the improvements are going to last. And if we, I don't know what it would take to move a plaque or whatever we had intended to, to the new location. But that might be something we can consider revisiting, um, for that.
I'm, I'm just worried that recently we found out that we were not successful with the Lamalfo grant. And so, um, without funding program for that other area, really it's, it's under weed abatement, you know, for the next year with no plan.
For the park, there is no, there's, we have no funding for any type of park at all because of that, the Lamalfo grant. It's weed abatement.
Not for that location, unless we, unless it's re-prioritized and, and, and put some money away for it.
I would almost consider putting the twenty K on a shelf and waiting for when we do, because it's good, it's just going to be a mess. But probably a conversation for another, another time, but.
Through the mayor. Um, one option that you would.
Okay. I'm trying to find you. What was it twelve five for that second trailer? Yeah. I don't know why it's weighed on me. We had to cut one of them out of there, but anyway. Go ahead. C D G won't work, but you know.
So Ben, so twenty thousand dollars for the plaque at Veterans Park.
That's what's been budgeted and requested from community services department.
So, you know, I appreciate that ask. I'm wondering if.
Let me add to it just to make sure I get the scope right. It's bronze plaque, electrical lighting vandalism to prevent. Vandalism prevention for the monument flag and flagpole.
So, you know, I appreciate the ask. I'm just wondering if that's, that's good money going after bad because the council. Brought up, I'm sorry, staff brought up an idea. That council was looking at with the idea of, of creating another, essentially another veterans park along the, the, the bridge street corridor. And it was my understanding that that had some legs to it. So my question is, I'm, I'm kind of questioning whether or not that that's just. Good money going after bad. That's my two cents. That's, that's good. All things Walton Avenue, right? You know, I was gonna, I was gonna hit you with that. You said, we're gonna really get that done twenty four, twenty five?
I'm hesitant. It's already, it's already summertime, right?
Right.
Already summertime.
That is a no.
That is a no.
That's a heard no.
That's no.
So.
But there, there's, we're working on the design. It's got to go through the Caltrans process and most likely we have to phase a little right away. But Diana is correct, but we're going to try like heck to get it out to bid.
So we, we, we're still waiting for the, the design to come through, right?
Right.
Okay. And that five point six is going to be the, the, of course.
Given, that's the target number.
That's the target number. Considerate consideration with the, the grant that we have through Secog that's at four, four, is it Kevin? Is it four million? Or five? Four point, four point four. Okay. All right. So keep our fingers crossed on that one.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is where the design and the engineering team work together because we, we love everything gold plated. I love to have a signal. With a roundabout with, you know, decorative streetlights and sidewalks on both sides. But we see this is the budget number. This is what we have and we put a sidewalk on one side. And we worked through some sort of a way to handle it to get to deliver to that project, something that's acceptable.
Right. Okay. Did I hear you correctly in saying that Caltrans doesn't see an issue with L Margarita and twenty?
That was what was relayed, relayed to us with the traffic staff based on their input for. How they analyze roads as far as collision based and, and volume.
Okay.
And they see the need based on development, future development.
Right. And then you also alluded to the possibility that when and if that day comes, who would, who? Would be responsible for that? And then we're talking about potentially property owners, right? In that area?
Yeah, I wish I had an exhibit, but it's, it gets, it gets into the weeds. It really does because it's. It's proposed to be part of our impact fee program. And so when development comes, there's a portion of that that goes into the impact fee program. But then also who comes first? How do we handle that? But there's, there's, there'd be different players involved.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ben.
We had similar questions. So I'll just go is. It occurred to me when we're going through this too, that the twenty K, given what we're doing to Veterans Park. I mean, the improvements are great, but you know, speaking from experience, you probably set your watch by how long the improvements are going to last. And if we, I don't know what it would take to move a plaque or whatever we had intended to, to the new location. But that might be something we can consider revisiting. For that.
I'm, I'm just worried that recently we found out that we were not successful with the La Malfa grant. And so without funding program for that other area, really it's, it's under weed abatement, you know, for the next year with no plan.
For the part, there was no, there's, we have no funding for any type of park at all because of that, the La Malfa grant. It's weed abatement.
Not for that location unless we, unless it's re-prioritized and, and, and put some money away for.
I would almost consider putting the twenty K on a shelf and waiting for when we do, because it's good. It's just going to be. A mess, but probably a conversation for another, another time, but.
Through the mayor. Um, one option that you would have is to take that twenty K to put it towards doing a preliminary architectural design for. That park on the north side of Bridge Street. So you could evaluate where the park would be relocated. And then as we sell off the remaining surplus properties on the north side of Bridge Street, because we have a couple. That we can sell, we could directly through council's direction, put those funds towards. Development, you know, in incremental phases of that vacant property.
It's a big, a good, a good alternative. I mean, the, the Veterans Park of all things, anybody we need to honor, that's not being very honorable right now. And we can't be all places, all time to prevent something from happening to it. Okay. So my two cents on that.
I know. That's a great idea. I don't know as far as Spencer, Diana. To establish a C I P at the moment, is that something we bring back? But we could work on that for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very pleased to see the highway twenty L Margarita piece, especially. In lieu of the, the recent accident, I, you know, I, I, I talked with the city manager and, and heard the. Comments from Cal, Caltrans that this is not a dangerous intersection. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I responded to a fair amount of traffic accidents. And I'm afraid that if we don't do something there and we know it's an issue. That we, we, we are obligated to spend some money to try to get this thing moving. However, we can move it. The, the fact that it's basically an uncontrolled intersection. Highly trafficked or traveled by high schoolers. It, to me, it's just, you know, it's, it's just waiting for another catastrophe. And I'd hate to be in a reaction mode. So I applaud you guys putting that on there. One thing that I would, that I would ask, because you talked about us having to do. Maintenance work on the Madden House. Is that correct?
Right.
For the council, why are we holding this piece of property when we're disposing of all this other city property? Is it because, you know, we have in kind for the Chamber of Commerce? I mean, to me, it's one of those things that begs a bit of. Taking a look at is that, could we do that around? I'm not suggesting that you reappropriate the money right now, but I think, you know, why do we want to be in the landlord business if we don't have to? We're just, we're not really getting rent. It's in kind for the chamber and all we do is take care of the damn building that's ancient. When we had parks and wrecked there, it was, it was a different story, but it's a tenant now. It's not us. So.
I think, if my memory serves, I think we looked into that, but there's some restrictions on our ability to get rid of it. I'm not sure what the details were though.
So Ben has been doing some research on that because when that map was, that land was divided. They did dedicate it to the city and there was some strings attached to it. Ben, do you recall what the response, the answer was?
You know, there was definitely some C C Rs as far as who's going to maintain it and how. Yeah, I haven't dove into it to that, that level. We could definitely look into that. It was, you know, a hundred and fifty pages thick and there was definitely some criteria as far as when it was acquired and what level of maintenance had to be done. Initially, and so we'll get with the attorney and I'll have a better answer. I can get to everybody. But I, I, I mean. You know, pros and cons, but there is definitely, we looked at that with the facility needs across the city. There's definitely needs, you know, everything from lead paint to dry rot to fencing. That's there, but across. And so there, there is ongoing needs here.
Mr. Mayor, so it's not an asset. It's a liability. Can we give the thing back? I mean, if you give it back, you don't have to sell it. You don't have all the staff time. Working on trying to figure out if this thing's sellable and how we do it. Give it back.
I'm not sure that there's anybody to give it back to. It was the original.
Back to, but there's someone there blocking it to sell it. I know that's ludicrous. Okay.
Sell it for a dollar.
My two cents, my two cents on what Ben presented, I'm kind of in favor of taking the twenty thousand and doing a study. Instead of just throwing it at something that's going to get vandalized again. Other than that, we've got a lot of needs. Thank you, Ben, for laying it all out. So I'm good with what, what's been presented tonight.
All right. Well, with that, I will bring back some information on the Madden House. We'll make the adjustment for the, the.
I'm veteran, the mayor, you're not done yet, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
First of all, you lost my support for Walton when you said roundabout. Both of us about fell out of our chairs.
I said gold plated, you know.
That's not gold plated. That's more like copper plated around about in. Just listening at everything that, that we're talking about tonight. I mean, they're all good points. But the one thing that I feel that we really got to be careful of a council and doing. Is getting so far down in the weeds that we can't see the forest for the trees because, you know. And, and you guys have done, your teams have done all the work and get way down in the weeds and we do as well, but. When we're up here talking about twelve thousand dollar trailer and, and just follow me guys, a twenty thousand dollars for this, a twenty thousand for that. When we're dealing with over a hundred million dollars a year in a, in a budget overall. We're starting to get really, really down low in things to where this should be taking a look at it staff. And we also have to be real careful with things such as the Madden House and everything else, because that's partially. That's an investment into our, you know, our economic engine here in town, because that's the home that a chamber of commerce here in town. And we've got a partner and we support them. You know, it's just like we partner with the E D C and we get certain things there and Secog and G sec, all these other things. I just kind of watched this. Dive real deep tonight and we've got to be real careful because we're going to end up stepping over dollars to pick up pennies in the long run. It's what we're going to end up doing. The, not a problem with exploring more on the new veterans park that we want to do versus. Investing in something that it's not an if, it's just how many days it'll take before it's going to be vandalized. But my question that I have goes back to the fifty K for L Margarita. Okay. I drive it. I turned it. I had this discussion with Diana yesterday and. I know exactly what it's like and I was floored as well that Caltrans says, oh, it's not a traffic issue. And I'm going, have you tried to go west and turn south? Depends on traffic, how soon you get across there. And then we saw what happened the other night. But there really wasn't a traffic issue because there's DUIs involved and everything else. So you take the alcohol or whatever was there out. It's not a traffic issue, but that's still not my point. I'm just rambling. The. The mayor's like, I mean, we have a lot of development going on at L Margarita. You've got the church, car dealership, senior development, housing. Don't we have a lot of? Traffic studies and stuff going on out there right now? And should we not get all of them on the same page if we're looking at doing something with L Margarita? Because it's going to have a residual effect and we're, you're talking about putting fifty K aside. But they could come back and ask for a hundred. They come, could come back and ask for two hundred. I'm just wondering, are we almost premature without getting those other people to the table? It's really where I'm trying to go.
I don't think so. I think the city really needs to take the lead and initiate the process because realistically this is four years, four million dollars. And it's just, and none of those developers there, and, and it's really taken the safety part of it out. Is that this is going to be the next location that's a hindrance for development to the west. And so those properties. Along L Margarita, they're really, they all come back with a traffic study that says it needs a signal. But none of those developers have the time, the commitment and four million dollars to be that initial. Player to bring it in and their projects aren't big enough to absorb that. And so really I think this is where. You know, the cities right now is focusing on Bo, Bo Road and getting those improvements. But we need to move the needle, at least get the application going, at least get the design and then start working through. Figuring out that cost and who's, who's going to be a player if the, if the church is twelve percent, the car dealership is five percent. And then bring, once we have a design and some costs with some real money, then we could start focusing then Caltrans, hey, this is part of the growth or this is part of the safety. Control. How much can you, we, we leverage to bring them to the table to, to, to figure that out. And but. This is really, hey, this, nobody's going to take this initial step. Even though the development's coming, they want to rubber stamp their development, but, but it all hits the brakes when that signal's not going. And none of them have the, I guess, capacity at their level to move it forward. And so that's where I think it is a good idea. Hey, what's, what's, what's tackle this? Not at a full blown allocate four million dollars, but let's get the application in, let's start the feasibility study. We'll start working through those processes.
Help, help me understand because my understanding what Caltrans has said and mislangely, correct me if I'm wrong. They don't see it as a traffic light signal that's too close. We were talking about this the other day. It's. They have to be on board to put a traffic signal. So right now we're talking right in and right out, correct? Is what we're after?
So the phase one would be evaluating right in, right out. Caltrans has been on board with the traffic signal. What they have a more difficult time with is if we were to propose an access opening on the north side.
Okay.
Because of base of spacing of intersections, full intersections, access opening. But previously, when we've done traffic studies for projects proposed within that area, they have not. They've not been against a traffic signal at that location. It's just when you're talking about phased and improvements are right in, right out will get you a long ways for a long time. From an operational standpoint, and in doing so, you may not need a traffic signal if the public's willing to accept that you cannot make left turns there.
Okay. Yeah. And I think we need to do something, but at the same time, it's, I think we really. If we invest this, we need to get those developers to the table because there's like four of them that's got projects going because we don't need. You know, to be doing this and then go back to them in a year and go. Your percentage is X and we need this extra money. I think we need to make sure that. We're working collaboratively with them and we're not going rogue ourselves just to do this, unless we're going to pay for it. That would be my only question.
Yeah, I guess to clarify, it's really safety. We're trying to do the right in, right out. Ultimately for development, it needs a signal. And so then it's. How we work with Caltrans to get there and then who pays for what? And so, so you have a church that wants to have a school, a brand new church. We're working with them to see if that phased approach will allow a write in, write out, but it might require the signal. And so then it's, when do they come to the table? When do they have the money to bring it forward?
Right.
All right. Good idea for us to be involved in that. You know, it's, I can understand my Caltrans not excited about it because of the crap with the crass picture there, right? And so there's not a whole heck of a lot of stuff going on despite what happened the other day. Like David said, it's a little bit different situation, but. The fact that we do our foreshadow development coming in there and we have an entire school of brand new drivers a block away is kind of scary. So.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that we, we literally talked to him last Thursday and then this accident happens Sunday night. And so we'll definitely have a follow up to see if there's some immediate stuff that we could go out and do with oversight signage, striping. You know, make progress towards some sort of right in, right out, but we'll, we'll have a follow up because they owe us that collision data that we'll talk about.
Yeah. Thank you, Ben. Anything else, gentlemen? All right. We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number seven, future agenda items. Do you have anything? Madden House. That's good. That's a good one. That's a good one. All right. And now we're going to reports and communications, following reports and communication has provided for council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section as council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. City manager.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Spencer, Deanna, Amberjeet, Ethan, who's not here tonight for all of their work on the budget. Thank the departments for all of their work on the budget. You know, it's easy to do this in a couple hours. And know that it's four months in the making and a lot of behind the scenes. Also thank you to the council at Hawk. And to the city council for meeting with us and participating in this process. Separate from that, we do have two planning commission meetings this month in June with some good projects coming forward. So, you know, a lot happening at the Franklin Walton intersection, northwest corner, southwest corner. And then at the next meeting in next week, we have. An assisted living facility, which we haven't seen in U of City for quite a while. So that's exciting. And with that, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That was a fast report, but a lot was said. There's a, there sure is a lot going on. That's for sure. We'll go with council member Boom Garden.
Mr. Mayor, had opportunity to, I hope I got the dates right here to witness the Shanghai Ben Park. New equipment and to the staff that was involved with that, a lot of excitement around that. Sure looks neat and, and you know, had a couple. Trips by that's really being used. Our parks get a lot of use. Also, the, the Motna bocce ball. Well, I haven't seen anybody playing bocce ball yet. It's probably because it's five million degrees outside. So. Maybe that'll change when the weather changes. Had an opportunity to meet with Phil Trainer, you know, who is not a stranger to these chambers. Along with supervisors, Baines and Flores. And Scott Powell, the economic development person at, at Phil's request. This is for the community choice aggregation thing that we're going to hear about on, on the next council meeting. And what this has potential to do is for the, for Sutter County, the city of U of City, of course, to potentially. Have an option for electricity at a lower rate than what P G N E is charging. So it's kind of exciting to see how that works. I don't know how long it is. We'll know, know a lot more on, on June the eighteenth. But if you know Mr. Trainer, he's got a lot of energy and a lot of information and. He has promised to provide us with some of his expertise so we can ask the right questions. Continue to participate in revenue measure informational meetings. So to, to Chief Baker, Chief Alexander. Spencer, Diana, Ben, you know, each one of those that I've attended has actually been received really well. And I think people are asking the right questions. I think we're giving them, you know, good information for them to. You know, better understand what may be coming forward to them in November. Last night, as your representative to the B O Military Liaison Committee, I had an opportunity to. Visit with four star general Ken Willsbach, who is the, the guy in charge of air combat command. And some of his staff and, you know, in reality, it's all, all about the efforts locally to try to maintain. You know, Beal is a viable base. What can we do as a city to support that? A little bit about, you know, the threats that they see China. And just, you know, continue to show the, those folks who are decision makers in the air force that. U of City and the surrounding area does value the one point two or three billion dollars that they, that they drive into, into the local economy. With that, I think I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to thank staff for doing such a great job over there at the Shanghai Ben ribbon cutting. Has been really utilized. So thank you on that. Attended with the, the mayor, the Bridgefield. Post acute ribbon cutting, which is a facility over on Lybook Boulevard. Attended a grateful nation with the mayor. And if you've never attended that before, it's, it's certainly worth your time. It's, they do a, an amazing job to celebrate our nation and the folks that fought and died for it. I also tended the Coon Job Festival over at the Fairgrounds. It's held once a year. They had a really good turnout for that. Once again, bocce ball court, great job. Guys are doing pretty good on that stuff. I was invited to be commencement speaker. Or the Sutter, Sutter County Superintendent Schools. Adult ed graduation held at. Shoot, the old Bolin Alley. What's that place called? Adventure Church. They had fifty five graduates that are eager to enter the workforce. And that was certainly my honor to, to participate in that. And then lastly, I was a, invited to sit at the, the squally table. At the stand down dinner, which was, this is the twenty fifth year for that. And man, they like twelve hundred people in that place. Had a huge turnout in support of the stand down. And that's my report.
Very good. Mr. Prince Qualley.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended the stand down with my colleagues at a table. I talked to. Supervisor McKelley yesterday at, at a meeting and he said that they had a great, great return on their dollar. He was astounded at how much money they generated, something like sixty thousand dollars for the stand down for the veterans, for the community. So that, that. So that, that was really great to hear. Went to my North SAC Valley Integrated Regional Water Management meeting, uh, yesterday. And our groundwater is looking good. Uh, they're, um, uh, a lot of good things going on with, with, um, trying to mitigate the loss of water and as such in the state and the north state. So I was really wondering, you know, why I travel all the way over to Willows, but once you get there and you hear what's going on and, and the efforts that they make, uh, to make us viable and retain our resources, uh, it, it's worth my trip going to Willows. Went to, I was invited to the Hard Rock for Uba College, uh, had a, um, presentation of they're, they're putting a, a capital improvement, uh, just pushed forward. And our, my colleague, Mr. Mark Boomgarden was one of the speakers, gave his, um, perception of what Uba College had done for him and the community. Uh, and I know that if you've been here any length of time, that college has made a difference in your life, whether it was a fireman that showed up that went there or, uh, your accountant that went there or eh, you could just, i- i- it's a really, really great resource for our community and we need to get behind it. Eh, eh, it's, it's ailing and, uh, they need some real help. Also went to my air quality control board meeting. We had a presentation from one of the, uh, council members from Sacramento that's on the air quality state board. And, uh, uh, biomass is huge and they're going to start pushing, uh, that agenda, uh, and they're going to try to bring more and more of that forward as an alternate, alternative to either wind or, um, solar. Bachi Balls, great facility, that, that park gets a lot of use. I go by it every day and there's tons of people there. I haven't seen any players yet, other than, I think before it was dedicated, I saw some people out there before it got hot. I'd just like to end my, um, report with, we lost another one of our citizens that's been a huge, huge sense of terms. It's, I mean, the gold rush days is the Chime family lost Hyman. Uh, a great man, they've got a going business, been a huge part of this community. And I just wanted to mention that, that, that we did lose Mr. Hyman Chime. And with that, I'll close my report.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief here, attended most of everything that we talked about up here, uh, from the stand down to the dinner with the general last night, uh, to the park, uh, equipment, which missed out as a kid because they were never that big when I was a kid. Pretty awesome. Uh, did miss the bachi ball courts because I was in a meeting with the, uh, the ones that needed to be in the meeting for the, uh, Seek Festival and Parade coming up in the fall. For the council to know, uh, where we're at, we're on track with that. Uh, the mayor and I had met with the, uh, temple president a few weeks ago, presented them with a, I think it was a list of about eighteen items that needed to be addressed this year. Everything from traffic and parking to safety to you name it was on there. They are on track, uh, per them to have everything really turned into us, uh, here by the end of this month and keep things moving forward. So we have more meetings ahead. Uh, the mayor and myself are meeting regularly with the temple president and then we're also setting in on the tactical meetings and, and chiefs, you guys are doing a great job, by the way, on that. So, uh, the end product hopefully is we have a very safe event for our community and we solve some of the issues that we've had over the years, because this thing just keeps growing. Also, the RWMA, uh, we've had, as you know, we're in the process of, uh, finding a new executive director and a permanent home. Uh, we have approved to enter into a contract with a organization called R Three, uh, which will serve as the interim executive director as a consultant and make sure we keep the train on the tracks more or less while we go out for a, um, a search for an executive director. And, uh, the council should know the firm that we're using, because it's MRG. So we use Shirley and them to, uh, to research and, and help us find a, uh, the executive director. And, uh, a grateful nation, um, I had the honor of presenting on behalf of the council to Dave Reaver, uh, Purple Heart recipient, we're a Purple Heart town. Thank you, Mr. Kirchner, for helping walk that through. Um, it meant a lot to him and he said to bring back thank yous to the council and the mayor because, um, he goes all around the world to help people deal with the PTSD and the stress of battle and being wounded and everything. That's, that's what our military, they send him all over. And for him to come here for twenty years and be recognized, he had no knowledge of it and it was a surprise at the end. Uh, he said it really meant an awful lot to him, so I pass that along. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, you guys already hit it, or all my stuff too. Great Federation of Members continues to be a phenomenal program. Uh, what a, what a privilege and an honor it is to have that, something like that of that caliber here in Uba City. If those of you have not been to it, I'd highly recommend it. Bring Kleenex, that's for sure. Um, I was asked to speak to the leadership class, uh, fourth graders at, uh, Lincoln Elementary School, so that was very fun and interesting. I think they thought I was the president and wanted to ask where my bodyguard was and then I don't know, maybe they know my ex-wife, I'm not sure, but. Uh, I did happen to see somebody play in the bachi ball courts a couple times, so that was nice to see that happening. And I also attended the, uh, grand opening slash ribbon cutting for the newest, uh, facility on, uh, Pluma Street. The Hooligans, I'm not sure what it's called, bar and pub, a bar and Irish pub. Um, so they, uh, really are doing it right. It's a really nice place, it was definitely probably the most heavily attended ribbon cutting I think I've ever been to. It was really nice and very festive and positive and the food's really good too, so there we go. Um, unless there's anything further, I also want to thank you guys, our staff and everybody for all the obvious hard work you put into this. Hopefully we weren't too much of a burden for you and adding too much to your plate, but, um, a great job, um, as always. So thank you very much. That, you all have a great rest of your night.
Uba Sutter dot lives, local government live streams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Uba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Uba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Uba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.